There it is.
All right, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty P. M. We are in the D. P. W. Conference Room and also on the Teams Video Conference. Members present from my left.
Lyndon Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Bill Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Card Potthaus.
Alternates.
Phil Griffin.
Alternate.
Staff.
Rob Taylor, staff.
Whitney Banker and also alternate.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make a comment about people at home turning their camera off.
Turning their camera off?
Yeah, otherwise we watch them when we see the video for half hour or more.
Oh, we see that.
Well, when you watch the video after the facts, half the screen is the person who's on. Wherever it pops up on at home, they take up at least half the screen and then sitting in the wherever.
That's not good.
It's in that way ever since. It's just distracting.
Okay, so we will ask that our guest who is here to turn your video off. We thank you very much. A gentleman who just walked in, have you signed in yet?
Oh, no.
Please do. Look for it is somewhere there.
And I have a question about this is when when someone online does speak, could they turn their camera back on?
Yeah. That would be a good, good general rule. When you are online, please turn your microphone and your camera off unless you are actively speaking. So, new rule. Um, we have no hearings tonight and with the permission of the board, I would like to bump the new business up to the top of the list here. New business being review and comment on Laramie Farms special exception application. Is there an objection to that?
No.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah, um, I'm going to make a motion that the planning board make no opinion on the Laramie Farms special exception. And my reasoning is because this is coming to us. We do not have an application in hand and it would be coming to us as a completed application. And the other side of that is.
I'll second your motion.
Yeah, thank you. We shouldn't. It's not up to us to give guidance to a zoning board. The same as the zoning board wouldn't come in here and say we're in favor or not in favor of you giving a waiver. And if they receive a special exception or don't receive a special exception, there's going to be a different wetlands. Um, piece because if they get a special exception, obviously there'll be a different water management plan than if they do. And I think that we get our bite at the apple when it comes as a site plan review. I see the reason why you would have conservation putting an opinion because wetland crossings are within the purview of the Conservation Commission and they don't get any other time to bring it up. I mean, I'm going to go one step further, but not on this motion is we should also put that on the March um ballot that we be removed from that. The only time and it's the other thing is it's no place in the R. S. A. Does a planning board give an opinion on a special exception to the zoning board? That's my.
That's your speech.
That's my speech.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded and I will add that a part of the site plan review is a stormwater management plan, which would have a definite effect on the wetlands. And without having all of the pieces, it is not really possible for us to come to any conclusion of the or even a recommendation. So, if there are further discussion.
Yeah, just like you say, I when we were presented this thing, Rob sent this around. It did seem unusual.
Yeah.
And I wonder with the Chesterton's fence approach. They put that in the ordinance for some reason. Does anyone know why?
I got. Talked to Jim this this afternoon about it. He thinks it was intended for projects where you guys wouldn't get a bite at the apple, like a big house going in and they needed to cross wetlands. You guys wouldn't do a single family home site plan. So it would give you a bite at the apple on projects that are not coming for you. And he thinks that's that's the background, although we might have somebody in the room that can give us some explanation of the two. I think she knows a little bit about it, but that's what I that's what I understand.
That would make sense.
Yep.
Yeah, Seeley, do you have any history on this? Um, on our S. A. This ordinance?
On the start saying again.
Do you have any history on the zoning ordinance? That says that the planning board should provide an opinion on a wetland crossing to the Z. B. A. For a special exception.
I do. I do know that there it was. I don't know if it is now, but the Conservation Commission was supposed to get every time somebody went to the Z. B. A.
Yeah.
They were supposed to be noticed.
Yep.
And I understand what you're talking about. It's the same as planning board and somebody else. There's another party.
The health officer.
Everybody's been notified.
Of the health officer.
The health officer is the third one.
Yeah, and that that I don't know where it is in the zoning ordinance.
It's it's yeah, we found her this morning. It's there. Yeah, it's the only time the planning board is in there is for a wetland crossing. There is no other place that the planning board has said they should give an opinion. It doesn't say give an opinion. It says review.
Comment or something like that.
Our comment.
Yeah.
So, we um suppressing those words, we have the authority to disregard that section of the ordinance.
Our comment is we have no comment because we don't have all of the information that we need to comment on.
Well, then I I think that's.
It's somewhat circular.
Motion.
My motion is that we do not give an opinion on this.
Well, I I think we need to give an opinion. It's just that it's.
Our opinion is we should. We don't want to comment.
Yeah, just some line with the wording of the ordinance.
Right, okay.
We don't have to have any.
And we comply with the order. Right, we we comply with the ordinance because we.
Have no comment.
We've reviewed it and we have no comment.
Any other comments?
Not good with that.
Okay, uh, are people ready to vote? All in favor of Dan Kylie's motion to confine our comments on the wetland crossing special exception for Laramie Farms to no comment? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extensions? Motion passes.
Just a just an F. Y. I. The applicants did come.
Yeah.
I did call them as you had instructed me.
Yeah.
They were obviously concerned that there might be some discussion and they really wanted to be your ace.
Yep.
So they came anyways, so. There you're now free.
All right, well, thank you for coming. We thank you for coming and apologize that you had to make the trip.
It was beautiful.
Thank you.
Hey. Seeley.
Um, I know you've already made the motion pass it. I think when I came in, you were saying that um you don't have all the pieces to the the whole
Exactly.
puzzle to this project and to the comment. And that doesn't, by the way, this motion one doesn't sound like that. Sounds like I I I guess what I'm saying, I wish you had added that into your motion because it sounds, you know, no comment, but no reason, you know?
Well.
He did say.
I gave before you came in, I gave the reasoning is there'll be a different uh, plan based on whether they get the wetlands crossing or not. Because if they get a if they get the waiver or they get the special exception to have the the wetlands crossing, then they're not going to have the same plan as if they didn't get it because they're going to have to do something with the water that's going to go come in through the crossing.
I'm also happy to report that the Conservation Commission did these gentlemen that were just here. They did meet with the Conservation Commission last week. And they basically left it as Conservation Commission members had any additional request or questions that they were going to feed him through Shirley Green, the chair, to me, and I was going to feed it to the applicants. And that's already happening. We've already been sending stuff requesting more information for the Conservation Commission. And that the members, I mean, some of the stuff they want is more detailed maps and.
I wanted to add, why are you here? The other thing I question maybe wrong, I don't know. But when this came before twenty years ago, wasn't it denied?
The whole application?
No, because they.
The whole project, but similar.
No, they the the developer pulled out at that time.
Yeah.
Well, the very first one, which was a different developers, different.
The Iron Man.
Six or single family homes.
Right.
Um, passed.
Right.
And then they never got built.
Right.
And then he sold the plans, the projects
Right.
to somebody else. I don't know if it's the these developers or if it was even.
Yeah, it was the San DeBeto brothers.
Without Steve Doherty.
Without.
John DeBeto who was here with the.
And I started but never completed the.
Probably never even had an application.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, they came for a conceptual. That was it.
Yeah.
So it wasn't.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, moving along, uh, next item.
Before we move on.
Yes.
I don't know if this is a question for you folks. I'm going to sort of over eighteen Seymour Farm. Um, is this type of meeting with them on the as like a new agenda or does this fall under the same R. S. A. As far as notification for others?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Because it is not a public hearing.
Okay.
Right.
There are certain things that are warned public hearings for us and this is not.
Okay.
When the application for the special exception goes before the Z. B. A., that will be a warned public hearing.
Has has already been before.
And yeah, I guess you've received your.
We did, yeah. I received it for that, but I didn't receive anything for the Conservation Committee
No.
or um commissions meeting or I just happened to come across them.
Yeah. We, you know, e- even if we were to formulate an advisory opinion, it would only be an advisory opinion and it would not have any legal weight to it.
Um, Rob, so if I understand you correctly, you said the individual Conservation Commission members uh, after the meeting and requested information passed to you. You've given that or you told the developers what they're looking for. Or is the conservation going to then meet and?
Yeah, they'll meet again at their next regularly scheduled meeting, which is for the. It's the seventh of November, which is before the Z. B. A. Hearing, so you probably heard that already. It's the seventh. They'll be commenting. And obviously you're free to send us anything you want. If you wanted to send a letter or anything like that, you can do that, but obviously all all meetings are public and so forth, and you can participate as as much or as little as you want.
Okay. Um, any other questions, comments, discussions on the Laramie Farms project or issues related there too? Okay, then let's move on to conceptuals. Aiken Storage, Lovejoy Brook Road. You guys here?
We have three people.
We are.
All right, gentlemen, come on up.
Want to come up?
And tell us what you would like to do.
And they also have, I think it's an engineer.
Yeah.
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 You guys. You guys such. She put her camera on.
Okay, uh, could you introduce yourselves, please, and your engineer who is on screen?
Sure, I'm Nick Aiken. This is my brother Chris and that's Cindy. She's been helping us out with the project.
Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me okay? Um, would it be okay if I shared my screen to show the plan?
Definitely.
Yep.
All right, um, can you see this okay?
Yep, yes.
All right, so here's what we have. Um, the Aikens own these two properties next to each other. Um, twenty and twenty-two Lovejoy Brook Road. And currently there are three, four, five, six, seven, eight buildings on the two lots. The plan is to merge the two lots so that they're one lot. Keep this building and build two new buildings. Um, so the work will all be done on essentially the lot that's currently um, the one in the south. Um, this building in the middle is existing. The intention is to demolish the building that's there and rebuild on the existing foundation and then to build two new storage buildings, one to the north and one to the south of the existing building and then repave around it for traffic circulation and also as part of the project will um redesign and move the septic system to be between the two buildings. The existing septic system is here now. So the intention is to do this. Um, the reason to come before you is to give you a general overview of what the project is. Um, the existing use is storage. The intention is to keep um, the use as storage on both sites. And as I said, um, the intention is to merge the two lots. Um, and currently this is in the Route Four zoning district. And there are few items that won't comply with the Route Four zoning district. And I guess um we'd like to get the board's opinion on um how to move forward on this project.
Okay, would you outline the specific non-complying issues that you are aware of?
Okay, so if I look through, I had just written. I don't know if you guys can see this, but it's basically an outline. Um, I did. We did the zoning ordinance review in September of the Route Four District and um, there's not really a principal building on the lot. Um, if we have to choose one, currently the distance between these buildings is twenty-five feet between here and here and here and here, and the district requires thirty. Um, so that's one of them. Um, second one, uh, the building form, the height of the building. I believe the way it reads is the building has to be a minimum of sixteen feet and the two proposed storage buildings are proposed to be ten feet high, so they don't match. They don't they don't meet the minimum requirement. Um, the building facades are are not going to meet the building facade requirements for the Route Four District. Um, we're not proposing any sidewalks. Um, there are currently no sidewalks on Lovejoy Brook Road, so the intention was not to propose one for this particular project. Um, there's some landscaping requirements. Um, some parking requirements. And um, this other one is the natural resource area. Currently, um, one of the buildings is within the fifty-foot setback of a wetland. Um, this one, the wetland setback clips the corner of this building. So those are in general, um, the items that don't that this particular plan does not meet the current zoning for the Route Four District.
Okay, well, um, we have some potentially good news for you. One of the amendments to our zoning regs that we are going to put before voters in March is to essentially do away with the specifications for the Route Four District and have it revert back to what it formally was, which is the C. B. So a lot of those um, height and facade uh, will just disappear.
It passed.
It passed.
It passed.
It passed, yes. So I don't know what your construction timetable is. Uh, but there there should be clarification at March meeting if we change the requirements for this district. Um, if not, I would I would hypothesize that the board would consider that the existing buildings are non-conforming and grandfathered. And I would I would hope that the board would go along with granting uh grandfather status to the building that is to be construct, the the middle building.
I don't quite understand.
No, you couldn't.
You couldn't?
No.
No, it's.
Even if it's rebuilt.
As a whole.
Hmm.
Right, is the project as a whole. You can't.
Project as a whole. They're also they're also adding two new ones.
You're right.
Yeah.
And they're they're tearing. You're going to be tearing down the middle one, right, and constructing a new one?
Yeah.
Which probably is not to be on the footprint.
Yeah, they said it was going to be on the same.
Same same foundation.
Same, okay, well, but the two on the side are going to.
Those are new?
The two on the sides are new, going to be new, right?
Top and the bottom, north and south are new.
Okay. I didn't understand that. I thought those were existing. Did you?
So right now, the twenty-five foot thing.
Okay.
New would be probably.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the three buildings on the bottom there.
Right, those are all proposed new buildings.
The the big one in the middle is existing and will be uh, planning to demolish and and rebuild on that. Two smaller.
Okay, those are new. Okay. Then then you do have that um
Yeah.
setback issue, which would have to be dealt with in some form. Linda, did you have a thought?
Well, yeah, did I look thoughtful?
You look you look like you wanted to get a thought on the table.
Uh, I was thinking you could go ahead and merge the lots and have that done with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you don't have lots that back issues. Right.
For the line between the two lots.
Sure.
Yeah.
So the setback issue strictly between the buildings.
Well, there's the wetland also issue.
The wetland issue.
Could someone point that out where that is?
In our building?
This here? So the wetland um setback is this light line right here.
Right.
So that this corner of the building is within the fifty feet of the wetland.
Did we not increase that setback?
You did for.
Wetlands is seventy-five.
Hundred, hundred.
Hundred, I'm sorry. Will you be changing the base elevation?
More than three hundred feet, I think.
Um, at all?
I just don't remember the.
For the new buildings?
No, we wouldn't need to change it. No, we wouldn't need to change the base elevation. It would remain fair. It's a fairly flat lot, so there's not a lot of grading that has to happen. It's mostly grading just to um allow the drainage.
Because it was the original construction for those storage units, they elevated um to get out of the floodplain zone. So I suppose wondering if there's going to be more of that happening.
Well, it'll be consistent so that they're not within the floodplain. They live consistent with each other. Does that make sense?
Well, is it going to be Phil brought in to to create that level spot?
No, it's already a level spot. This is already level. Yeah, and so is this.
As then to point it out, uh, they could merge the two properties.
Yeah.
Would they be able to do the tear down and rebuild on the same footprint? And possibly put the building in above it because it's not encroaching on the wetlands?
Here.
Is it going to phase develop? Well, you still have the other issues with the Route Four and the stuff that just.
And the new building matters. The new building is going is it'll be on the same footprint, but there's a difference in height.
Yeah.
You would have to do the new one at sixteen feet in order to have it.
Right, so it varies. So, okay.
Right.
So the the ordinance requires the building to be sixteen feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that that that's why we're getting rid of it.
That's why.
Yeah.
Overly descriptive.
Right, be descriptive, yes.
Understood.
I think they were thinking of of.
What's going to be.
If it looked nice on Route.
Right, yeah. Right.
This is a hidden corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is one other maybe others, but um issue with building back here, we're we're within a a few hundred yards of municipal water supply.
Right.
And so I've always been concerned about I see these storage buildings and you wonder what is being stored there? So the question would be, and because of the water supply issue, uh, do you have restrictions on hazardous materials?
Yeah, that those in all our leases, it's it's restrictive, you know, nothing hazardous, flammable.
And I assume there are no floor drains in any of these buildings?
No, no, certainly not in in the storage and in the larger existing building, there's a concrete cutout, I think, just where the water comes in, but it's not. It's not a floor drain, but.
Probably a sun pump.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then um is it really necessary to add asphalt pavement? Could you use a pervious surface of some kind? Again, we're we're these buildings are encroaching on the recharge zone of municipal water supply.
Right, they're in the wellhead protection area, right? There's a radius around it.
Right.
It's probably.
Not the center.
Circular line that's going through.
Right.
It's probably the radius line.
No, so this.
It's further.
This line here, this is the floodline. This is the existing conditions plan. So the the well the wellhead four hundred foot protective area is here. It barely. It actually barely clips the the lot.
Oh, okay.
But this is that protective area here. And then this line is the flood, the floodline.
Okay, ma'am, what what are the uh four long, narrow right there? What are that?
Those are buildings, the storage building. So it's sort of it looks like one building probably from a road, but there are actually four separate.
Okay, so on the so walk me again through what you're you're proposing do here from from this plan.
So this building is going to be rebuilt. It'll be demolished and rebuilt, and then we're going to merge the lot lines. This is the lot line here. Another, we're going to move the septic system. Build of new storage building here, a lot basically along where the existing lot line is, and then a second storage building on this side.
Oh.
And that was sort of the original plan a long time ago with with Bob LaCroy. And then he, I guess, changed his mind at some point and switched gears to
Right.
just a storage warehouse, but he formerly had sort of those buildings continuing in a row um, onto the next lot.
So do you know how cars stored in there or not?
Far fewer than he did.
I know.
At least we're completely full.
Sure. So you can store a car in there.
In the larger units, some some seasonal is a a big one. One of the first of all pits. Um, people do. It's pretty infrequent. People do, it's pretty infrequent, the doors are so small, you can't, you really, you can put a small boat in, but a, a, you know what?
Yeah, how the doors are small, you're right, okay.
Any other questions? What about the zoning ordinance change passes? The CB district then would encompass this area, Rob, is there anything in the CB that? Would come to play here that?
Likely that's what wetland setbacks still would apply in the CB.
Right, that would be the only thing.
And they would need a, uh, you know, a variance if they're gonna be in the setback.
Right.
Or re, redesign that building just to cut off that corner.
Right.
Um, and then obviously a, a, a new site plan with you guys, it's, it's their expansion of the use.
Yeah.
So, uh. You know, we're on a, we're on a sort of glide path for zoning amendments to be presented to a hearing in. December, maybe early January, and if, if we make it through the, the hearings with. Some general support this board and the general public, it'd get placed on the town meeting warrant for March town meeting, which is generally about mid-March. Somewhere in there that, that would get voted on at the Tuesday, actual in-person voting. Um, and, and, you know, obviously that, then we would have our certainty after that, whether or not Route Four zone stays.
Otherwise, they would have to go and get a variance.
There's a lot of variances.
Yeah.
With, with the Route Four zone, and, and here it is, example A of why I think the Route Four zone is not. It doesn't really, it's not good.
Yeah.
I think, like we said, overly prescriptive.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think. I think assuming that, that ordinance changes do pass. My focus would be, just to give you guys some. Some guidance, at least from one member of the board, is, is, is really about. Protecting the recharge zone of the well, making sure it's, nothing's gonna be contaminating that. Um, so if you came back with pervious pavement or some version of that, you know, that would feel good. It might help, might help the, uh, the variance for the, uh, the wetland encroachment.
Okay, yeah.
Now, it's not just, that's not the board opinion.
Oh, sure, oh, sure. But I agree with you too, we're worried about the wellhead.
Yeah.
How much of the building? You could build three quarters of the building, couldn't you? Well, the, the one that's.
This, this one?
Yeah, the one that would be in the corner.
Right.
Yeah, about half, actually, probably about, it probably crosses right about here, two thirds of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, if you needed to do something this fall. You could do that and. Kind of.
There's still the conundrum of the Route Four.
Like which one?
Right.
Yeah.
I think still a lot of areas.
Yeah, I mean, the difference between ten and sixteen is.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of ways. Six months, you'll, you'll know.
Okay.
That our, that our ordinance probably is much more favorable to you, if, if, you know, if it passes, as these guys have said, right?
Yeah, it would be alternative.
We're just making recommendations to the broader public and then they vote, and so.
Sure.
Typically, they put a lot of stock in what this board says, but.
Right.
Totally go against it and say, no, no, I'll keep that.
So our, our alternative would be to visit the zoning board and run this by them and see if they're.
They don't necessarily do consent. See, it would be an application.
Sure.
Yeah. They don't like to give opinion, they give decisions. That's right.
Okay. So if, if we did go to the zoning board and they were okay with our exceptions, do you have, have anything else that you might like to see?
No, I, I think Tim's comment, um, on the pervious surface. Would be something that, that we would really, you know, wanna incorporate into our site plan approval area.
Right, yeah.
Um, if they give you a variance on the setback, um. That's a decision that they made.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and we see, you know, I mean.
And, and, and the height as well.
Yeah, yeah. We see with modern building now, uh, your competitor who just built a storage facility up, up the road, a little ways on Route Four. The storm water management now happening on-site is much improved, and so. That's gonna be obviously something for your engineering firm to help you with, and we're building a new public safety complex that has all. On-site storm water management, the old days of just, you know, running a culvert off your property, dumping water off onto somebody else. Sort of behind us, and so I would say that that's probably something, a new bite at the apple from this board and, and just technology. That they're probably gonna wanna see some kind of improved storm water management, I mean, again.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago was just run a, you know, culvert bite to daylight, usually dumping it off on somebody else's land.
Yeah, and, and that would apply to the entire site, not just to the three new buildings.
So you're, you know, you're looking at some kind of retention pond or infiltration, I believe the. The one that Jake did, it's all underneath the parking lot, literally the storm water, so they're basically, to get into your point. Rain that falls on that piece of property still goes down in, into that land. And, and its structures and.
Right.
Things like that, so.
Good, good point, bringing that up.
Yeah.
No, we're not. There, there's nothing in the zoning that says they have to have impervious. Parking area.
No.
Nope.
It's just a good practice.
It's a good practice and we do have to have a storm water management plan. And an impervious surface would be part of that.
I would think that you also.
Or retention ponds, you know, there's, that's, that's for, um, the engineer to. Ball over and come up with a plan.
But it seems like you could also. Have an apron by the building paved, but in the center not having that impervious or something to keep water out of the buildings.
Yeah, the, the reason pavement's important to us is just snow removal and ice management, essentially. So we just wanna make sure we can make it, you know, safe for.
Yeah. Well, appreciate you guys coming in.
Yeah.
Eating through me, I'll try to help you in any way I can, um, obviously, it's a little bit of a delay for you, if, if you wanted to wait and see what happens with our zoning, but.
Sure.
I don't know what kind of timeline you were on to hope breaking ground on.
Oh, yesterday would be good. Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll chat with Sydney and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Figure out a path forward.
Excellent, thank you.
But yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Let's see. All right, so next we have select board reports from Eric. And, um, I think two big things of interest to this group. Uh, one, we had our public hearing for the potential, uh, Lake Shore Septic Ordinance. There was a good couple of hours of lots of participation, people listening, folks. And then the other one is at our, hopefully at our next meeting, I might have to wait two meetings. There'll be another public hearing for the potential sale of Shed Street. And potentially entering into a, I mean, an intent to sell, there's a lot of work to be done, uh, but potentially entering into an intent to sell. Um, following a public hearing around that, so, um, that's moving forward and I'm optimistic.
Are you talking about it yet?
Only in that there's gonna be a public hearing, it's Bobby Oaks who bought the, um, the old, uh, Dr. Befay's old office. And they have a bunch of stuff in the area, they've presented a plan and non-public stuff as we were going through stuff, and I know they wanna. Sort of present it at the public hearing, uh, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I don't wanna say too much about it, but we're gonna have a public hearing, so we can say that much, cause.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you say the, um, select board passed the Lake Shore?
No, 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 we, we had, we had a, we had a public hearing, we haven't even deliberated on it yet, because the public hearing was a full two hours.
Yeah.
And we'll be deliberating on it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Very robust two hours.
That's a big crowd.
Big crowd and, and Eric did very well maintaining, maintaining order.
Anything else there?
No, those are the two big.
That was enough, huh?
Yeah.
Rob, what have you got for us?
So ZBA met last night, I'm happy to report that the CVA did grant the special exception to. Uh, Brian Dignan's, uh, former laundromat site, the, the brewery. As you.
Oh, good.
Remember.
Special for.
Sign. For, no, for wholesale business. Oh, okay. The variance that he was requesting for his signage kinda got put off a little bit because. We didn't have enough specifics, they wanted real specifics, which. Was a little bit on me, I should've said, Brian, you gotta give us something specific, like twenty-four square feet or. Here's a picture of the sign that I wanna build on the back of it, it was a little too sort of broad for them, so they said, come back when you actually have the specifics. So, um, but we're working on that, so hopefully.
Okay, I, I, I would assume that the big hurdle was the variant or the special exception for.
Yeah.
Wholesale.
I think we got enough to be able to get going, I mean, um. Um, uh, obviously, I'm working as hard as I can to get that there, I'm very motivated, as you guys probably all are, I'd love to, you know. Go to our little brewery in our own little town here, so, um, we're working as hard as we can with Brian and. Um, hopefully, we, right now, we're on a glide path for May one brewing. That's, that's where we're at right now, so, um, that was last night, obviously, there was a scheduled. ZBA meeting or hearing last night for Laramie Farms, but because of that whole twenty day notification for, uh. Conservation and you guys and the health inspector, we decided to delay it with the, with the support and cooperation of the applicants. To the November. Well, I think it is. Yeah. Yeah, November twelfth is the next ZBA meeting. Um, you guys have a couple of applications coming, I just sent out the certified mailings today, we've got a. Bounty, bounty line adjustment on Shaker Boulevard. Um, that was fairly complex because it required variance before it came to you guys, it's a very small, pre-existing, nonconforming lot. And then the other one was, we're looking like we're gonna get a coffee shop in downtown Enfield.
Wow.
Uh, at the, uh, former thrift store. Uh, location, and before that, I think it was the engineering firm.
Yep.
It was an.
Oh, that's a Georges.
Right next to Georges, yeah.
Georges.
Mascomba Bank, and before that, it was a hardware store.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
It's a really pretty building, I do know that there is, uh, Charlie Wyman has an engineering firm. I helped him get in, uh, he's in the back of that building where they sort of had their little, I'll call it a skunk works kind of R and D shop. Um, he's Charlie Wyman, is a pioneer in the field of fermentation and ethanol production. For, uh, I think jet fuel. Basically, that, he told me that they're certain that we can drive around electric cars and electric trucks. But he's also certain that very unlikely we're gonna be flying electric jumbo jets across the Atlantic. So they're gonna have to have ethanol jet fuel, so we've got to find sources, that's what he's working on right now. Um, so you'll see in the next week, stuff from me, cause we'll be meeting two weeks from tonight. Um, for those two hearings, um, I was, uh, just gonna give a quick update unless you wanna do it, Master Planning Task Force will meet. Monday night, anybody wants to come that's not on the, on the task force, we actually have the three remaining chapters of the five. We already looked at the first two at the most recent meeting, which is maybe three, four weeks ago. Um, the task force went through those with a fine-tooth comb, looking for inconsistencies, errors, spelling mistakes, typos, all that stuff. And so they have gone away, put in all of our recommended changes, redelivered those to us. Priority, though, on Monday night next week is for the three chapters that we have not looked at, and they've been delivered and, and you have copies of them. And so we'll be, should be an exciting meeting, I'm really looking forward to those, and so far, my impressions, I don't know if Dave would echo, but. It's been very impressive. It's been very impressive, they've really been able to sort of mirror the format and feel and sort of voice from our original.
Yep.
Five chapters. And, uh, they've used a lot of our, you know, pictures that we got from the aerial photographer and. Um, it's really looking nice and it's, you know, there's a lot of really good stuff in there, I, I've been impressed. So, uh, they've been excellent to work with Liz and Crystal, who are our contacts from Resilience for the Master Plan. So that is Master Plan, I was very privileged to go to, uh, an event on Saturday at Mascomba Lakeside Park. They dedicated the park, uh, on Saturday at two o'clock, it was absolutely spectacular. Of course, it was one of the nicest days of the year, Mascomba Lakeside Park was just, I mean, it was like God put a spotlight on that park Saturday. It was beautiful, all that work that we've done just was shining brightly, you know, it was beautiful. The plantings, the foliage, the, the lake. It was excellent, and they did dedicate, they put a couple plaques out, uh, Meredith and Doug Smith got a nice plaque for all the work they've done, fundraising and. You know, shepherding, the whole process, they put a, um, a plaque out for, um. Uh, the guy that donated all the, our, our landscape design, I think it was Mike Burns, um, he got a little dedication. And they also dedicated the pavilion to Paul Mersky, who was instrumental in helping design the park. Uh, the late Paul Mersky, and I got to, I got to work with him, he was fantastic. Um, it's kinda sad that he wasn't there to enjoy it, to see it through at the very end, but. Uh, there will be a park, you know, there's a plaque down there, there's big, beautiful brass plaques on the, on the stones and buildings and stuff, so. It was, it was just excellent, they had some music, they had some, they had loose donuts, uh, uh, apple cider donuts, which were like. People were going nuts for those, those were, I had two of them, it was my lunch. But again, I, I actually brought my two adult children with me to, uh, to the event, just drove them around, they. One of them had maybe seen a little bit of Enfield, but not really, and so I drove them around a little bit afterwards and they were just like, wow. Of course, you know, we've got brand new pavement all over the place and, and the, and the scarecrows and it just. I thought, Enfield put on a show, we really did, and it's, we've got a lot to be proud of, and I'm very proud, so. That was an excellent event, um, and I have had a couple of really cool opportunities in the last two weeks to tour. Uh, Capitol Projects with Ed, the town manager, um, looking at the Whitney Hall, which is really coming down the home stretch. Uh, they're looking like we could probably move in there before the end of the year, I think maybe even before the end of November. Um, that's gonna be a challenge, obviously, uh, from budgeting standpoint and stuff, but, uh, it's looking fantastic. If people start to drive by, you can kinda notice that they're starting to put the frosting on, you know, that's like the finish. Grade and the finished stuff on the outside, they painted, interior's been painted, it's fantastic, library is getting its flooring. The library is, is gonna be awesome, Whitney's an employee there and, uh, the, the natural light in there is, is amazing. I did get to go to public safety, yesterday they put the roof on, uh, the apparatus base. Uh, at least the plywood, you know, there's trusses and, and now it's hard covered, but what their goal is there is to basically get that thing buttoned. So that they can work in there all winter, and the target date on that is May first, where that will be ready for us to move into. And it's impressive, it's, it's a beautiful building, lots of space, lots of neat stuff that's gonna be new. Emergency operation center and, and booking rooms and patrol rooms and fire chief office and, you know, all the stuff that we need. And it's sort of, uh, you know, it's, finally, everybody's gonna basically have what they need and it's gonna be awesome. Uh, decontamination room for the fire gear and laundry for the fire gear, all that kinda stuff, and it's really cool. So that's about it for me, if anybody has any questions, I did send you guys the, uh, building permit sheet, and then Tim, to his credit, has. Uh, worked with me to basically put some polish on that spreadsheet that we're gonna implement going forward. That will have some more, would you describe it, indexing capabilities?
At the table?
Yeah. So basically, at the top of the columns, you can click on, show me all the electrical permits and it'll.
It's.
You know, uh, and it will do that for all of the columns, as Tim has shown me, and so, uh, I'm working with Vinnie, our building inspector on that to, to. To, uh, get that implemented, and that's what you'll see on the next time I send you that report, Tim has said that. Uh, it would be great to make that public information, which I, I've talked to the town manager and see if he's, if he's great with that. We are actually contemplating a software package that will probably help us with that, right now, we're very manual, as you know. Um, a piece of software that we're looking at actually would be primarily for the accounting of the town, all that.
This also replaces the one that was purchased in two thousand nineteen.
Accu-Font, which everybody at the town office absolutely hates and it's, and it's had some issues. But I don't know, that's going to be an issue whether they want to spend that money. And there is a component of that that we've looked at on the, on the planning and zoning and building side that would streamline applications. You know, you could basically fill out an application and A online, those kinds of things. It's not cheap. I don't know. I don't know what the whole package is.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand. So.
Is that a one-time fee?
But the question is, you know, the decision was made in 2019 to purchase the, an accounting system. What makes us think that this one's going to be any better?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you work with software, sometimes software can come back to bite you.
Yep, for sure.
So I don't know. I mean, we obviously are getting it done without the software and we can continue to do that for as long.
A lot of manual effort.
It's a lot of manual effort, absolutely. But that means that, you know, I mean, you can't at your fingertips pull up something that you want to see. We do have a plan someday. We'd like to go upstairs. There's, you know, probably 15 or 20 big four drawer file cabinets with all of our records. It would be awesome to get those all scanned into some kind of a searchable, indexable electronic format. So you can say, oh, you know, the, the Laramie Farms thing, let's look at the history of that. Well, here's the original approvals when you guys asked me those questions, but right now it's, we got to go dig. We do have very, very big luxury and then we have Jim sitting in this office over here, who's been here 25 years and he's got a lot of institutional knowledge right in his head. He's like, I know where that is. And he can go right up there and help me find it because he just knows where it was put, you know? And so sometimes that's, that's a, that's a huge win for us because he's right there, you know, to have that institutional knowledge at hand. That's about it for me. Still seems to be fairly busy. Solar people are interested in working in town. Real estate, still have some interesting speculation happening. Parcels, the Bob La Croix parcel on, on Lovejoy Brook, actually. It's off of Route 4 behind the Pellerance Auto is still having some genuine interest from genuine big time developers. So we may see something there. You guys may have a conceptual to talk about with somebody at some point in the not distant future. They've, they've had some really interesting conversations with me. Interesting thing there, the wild card on that is Bob owns 43 acres in Enfield. That's a big lot that's right there behind the dealership. He also owns like 200 acres on the other side of the Canaan line. And the developers are like, ooh, we'd like that too. And of course, Canaan, no zone. But it's a.
No sewer.
No sewer, no water. Do they, do they go onto ours? Is Canaan willing to pay us for that? I don't know. Those are all, those are all big challenges that going to have to get town manager in on, probably the city manager 11 and those are the kind of discussions that we'll be having. But that's it for me. Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
The next September 25 minutes.
I did talk to David. This highlight that you had pointed out.
Yeah.
It occurred to me after our last meeting on the way home that I don't think Jim ever executed a renewal, a reappointment as an alternate member. So he is at this point not on our roster as an alternate. Of course, we have, we have three members now alternate, so we may not need him. But I did tell David and so in the future, we, we don't elevate.
I will not make that mistake.
Yeah. That was on me, I should have remembered, but didn't occur to me until we were driving home that night. I was like, I don't think he ever re-upped. And sure enough, if you check it online, our website has the active members, or at least it does a good job of keeping that pretty spot on, so.
I have a couple of small things.
Go ahead, Linda.
Can I ask just quickly though, should, should we leave the minutes with Jim in there?
Yes.
The voting member.
Yes, because that's what happened.
Right, okay.
It was an error.
Yeah. Luckily, it was not a, not a close vote, so we're, you know, recounting his vote doesn't, doesn't change any votes.
Right. And the minutes for this meeting will reflect that we are aware of the error and will not repeat it.
Line 92, they're really small little things, but there continue to be many calls around real estate possibilities. I just changed that to about.
Oh, yeah.
And 111 that Enfield has also recently been noticed by their creative allowances.
Four.
Four, yeah. That's what I put. I think that was it.
And I do change the bullets that start around line 116, I think, is it 116? They kind of look like, oh, so I just changed it to a different format so it's not confusing. Linda asked at the beginning of the meeting.
Anyone else have any comments? Linda, are you agreed? Okay, anyone else? Somebody make the motion on the minute?
That we accept the minutes as perky.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Codes and extensions.
Stain?
Philip stains. He was not here. Next, all the business. Phil.
Yeah.
ADU language.
I sent a, a change to the, to my original document. Took all, all that conditional use stuff.
Yep.
Tried to get something, some wording that will pass at the town meeting. I sent that to Rob this afternoon, so I don't know if I run that off or not. Basically, it took all that continually, continuing, use of the thing because that's too complicated for people to try to understand. And I increased the size to 1,200.
Yep.
Square feet. And I took out, took out limited to two bedrooms and one bathroom because if you go to 1,200 square feet, you probably don't want to add two bathrooms and three bedrooms.
Good.
Give it the flexibility for that. Let me pull the document up here a minute. Call. See if I got it here.
I noticed in Rob's building permit summary, he had a permit for 180 so far this year.
Yeah.
But he just only didn't have before, so.
Yeah. I, while you're calling that up.
Yep.
I found out from some information that Kurt sent around and also I confirmed it with some planning people down in Concord that your plan of three identical sized buildings.
Yep.
And calling one of them the principal and the other two accessories.
Yep.
Not going to fly.
Not going to fly.
Not going to fly because the accessory has to be subservient, less than. So you would have to have one building just a hair bigger.
1300, 1250.
1300 square feet.
You just lay one garage and you're good.
Well, you can put the, you put all three garages on that principal unit.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Yeah, there's, there's workarounds.
Yeah, of course there are.
Yeah. And then I, I, I've got the document here, so I'll go through. So I still have the purpose statement and I kept the definition statement. And I kept the administration, just stating the RSA that this was created under. And then accessory, I took the 800, lined that up and added in 1,200. And then, and then condition space. So we got a definition of what that square footage is. So it's 1,200 square feet of conditions and then lined up containing no more than two bedrooms and one bathroom. As further defined in the RSA. That, that was original language in our original ordinance. Then I took out on, on our original ordinance talked about served by town sewer and yet to have a system does not need to be installed. I took that out and I put in the statement, ADU shall conform to the requirements of a single family dwelling, including provisions for water supply and sewage disposal, meeting the requirements of this ordinance and applicable state regulations. I just, that just.
It just covers everything.
Covers everything because if, if you let them put in the plan and the septic goes bad, you know, how do you know? In the meantime, you're draining sewage into the, into the streams and the, and the lake. So I say if you've been put in a couple ADUs and all those extra bathrooms, okay, there we are. Okay. That's, the red is all, all new, but that's just kind of, I liked the purpose statement. Just forward. It really describes to the community what we're trying to do with this.
You know, you know, I tried to number two is we do allow detached ADUs, so the within or attached is not.
Or stay attached or detached.
Yeah.
Strike the word with N.
Right.
Yeah, residential living unit that is attached or detached. Okay.
Attached to or detached from.
Yeah, you made that change. So does this allow two units that are 1,200?
Yep.
Would we have to add a definition line in our, in our glossary of terms for condition space?
I think we would.
Yeah. Sure, there's one that exists in steel shamelessly.
Yes. Keep going?
Keep going.
This, this was the change on sewer.
You're going too fast.
There we took out, took out remain under one ownership. We had discussion on that.
Actually, can you go up to three?
Yeah.
Is that the place to add building codes? To Tim's point?
Uh, I think that was in one of the last sections on the, in the ADU part. Is that still in there, Phil?
What's that?
Further down?
About the building codes, the ADU must be built to the same code as the.
Oh, I think it's in there.
Yeah.
Yep, there it is.
But like they were saying, you almost don't need that. If you're saying it has to be the same as a single family home.
Right.
Right. You could just, it's all single.
Yeah, that's the only, the, the only.
Yeah.
Septic or sewage issue you may run into is the state regulation says you have to have a certified plan. It doesn't say you have to put it in. And I would like to see it.
We should.
If you've got to require that it be installed, which is not a state, state requirement.
But we want it required.
We want it required.
I, I would agree with Dan on that.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Roll back up to, see if we got that. When cans inform to, for reform for this ordinance and applicable state regulations. But the problem is the state regulation doesn't say you have to put it in. It says you have to have the design.
But the existing, what's in the ground has to be able to handle.
Right.
Any addition.
But that's what we're getting at. No. What we're getting at is I could then, if I have enough for a three bedroom, as long as I have a certified plan for a five bedroom, because that's what I'm putting in, then I don't have to put it in, understand regulation. I just have to have the plan that if I do, I can put it in.
Yeah, this is, that interpretation just doesn't make sense to me.
I know it doesn't, but it, it's what it is.
I think it's been, I think without seeing the actual wording, I just think it's misinterpreting.
I think I have seen.
What it said.
Yeah, I have seen it and that's what it is. That's what the state is, is you have to have a certified plan. It never tells you you have to do it.
I went through it two years ago.
Right, exactly.
To get your building, not your building permit, but your occupancy permit, the septic has to match the number of bedrooms. So you wouldn't get your occupancy.
If you're renovating. If I'm renovating, right?
If you're renovating an already occupied structure, you already have the occupancy permit.
Right.
But well, you're, but you, there's not a renovation, you're adding, you're adding bedrooms.
Not necessarily.
Necessarily.
You may be repurposing a former bedroom into a.
But it was a three bedroom with the three bedroom system. If you put it in five bedrooms and have a three bedroom system.
The, the simple solution is to make it say explicitly.
That you have.
You have to install. Because otherwise this argument happens every.
This argument will happen, exactly.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, that's what we've been telling people exactly what you just said.
Right.
If you want to add an ADU, you have to have the system designed, you have to put it in.
Right.
Which makes no sense whatsoever.
And if the system continues to support the additional load, you're okay. But.
Right.
As, as we're discovering here, that.
But if it doesn't.
Things can get overloaded pretty quickly and unless somebody complains, nobody's going to know about it.
Right. And I mean, that's one thing that I was going to say to you on the state side. And to me, it's just ridiculous that you, you have to have a, if you're building a new house, you have to have a professionally designed system.
Yep.
You have to have professionally installed, has to be inspected by the state, has to be covered over. Once you're done.
Goodbye.
Never see you again. You go 50, 60 years, nope, we don't talk to you. You could go 60 years without pumping it.
Right.
And if it's got a hole in the side of the tank and it's oozing out into the river, so what?
Well.
That's the problem.
So to go back up just a wee bit, that's good. So we probably ought to leave three as written, take out the part at the very end in the parentheses.
Yep, you can do that.
Yeah.
And then say, shall obtain DS approval for a new onsite septic system. And then we're putting the effect.
Approval and install.
And install.
So maybe work on that, Phil.
Yep.
So the other, or another question that I have, 2A says three dwelling units within the same structure, subject to regulation as multifamily. And then in three, the new part in red, an ADU shall conform to the requirements of a single family dwelling. Which is it?
Well, I think we're going to drop the section in red.
Are we dropping that?
Because it's going to be, we're going to leave the section in three, except for the part where it's parentheses and then add must install. And we don't even need the section in red.
Yeah, right.
All right, so if that goes away, that's fine.
David, has the state, there was some action on the state level that they were trying to make it easier for ADUs and not enforce the multifamily.
Yeah, I, I mean, I.
I think they moved the whole multifamily, changed the whole multifamily. So this would still be appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think this would conflict with the state reg as it exists today.
No, because that was talking about sprinkler systems.
Yeah.
But there's other codes in multifamily that aren't sprinkler.
No, there's the walls.
And they still would apply.
Right.
The fire.
The fire walls.
Uh, can we go back up? So item four. Is that not defined ADU?
Yeah.
The only thing missing is that it needs to be part of a single family home.
Yeah, I, it just seems like the definition and item two and section, then the wording in section four could be, could be welded together.
Eliminate that.
Yeah.
I think the single family home comes out in that RSA, but it would be good to just
I think the single family home comes out in that RSA, but it would be good to just put it in there, I think.
Yeah.
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 Well, and then.
You could take out that whole section as further defined in RSA six seventy-four, because what's in, in number two already covers that.
Yeah.
Yep.
But Tim's point is you don't need it. It's easier to find ADU twice.
Right.
You have two definitions of an ADU.
Right, just, just weld those two sections together somehow.
There's this one.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll bring this one back again for final review.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're making the changes, right?
He is.
So you want to get together?
Yeah, let's get together and we'll kind of finalize it for next meeting. Okay.
Think come up with a, come up with a definition of conditioned space.
Anybody have anything else on ADUs? Okay, conditional use. I have nothing to add since our last meeting. They tie back to. Innovative land use controls.
Good comment on that. Eric and I have met once to discuss the zoning ordinance structure. And don't know that we, we didn't reach any conclusion. Review. A draft I had started working with using the city eleven model. I don't know, Eric, is that?
No, Tim's done a great job. He's put together essentially a complete draft that people can look at in view. I've got to run, I, we've made, I made some notes and I've got to run through and make some edits and comments. And then I think that within a couple of weeks, we'll have a like, okay, if you want to do. This, you know, section six point two, you can pull that out, fill it in. And then insert it back in. It's kind of the goal. Uh, and he's already inserted a whole lot of sort of. Language from, you know, three different sources, you know, so right now it doesn't read like a zoning ordinance, but like examples of like, this is what. Enfield has now. This is what, uh, the HOP grant suggested, and then here's what another town's had. Uh, so it's like an eighty page document now, but it's twenty pages of actual material. If you were to edit it down.
Reason I brought it up now is because the conditional use part. Um, if we use that template, just. Straight out of the city eleven and zoning ordinance, the conditional use section is there. So. I think we just leave, we don't do it. I, I would suggest we don't do anything with it for town meeting. And that it will be part of the new ordinance that will address at some point in spring. Um, but it is there. And I think we'll accomplish whatever, and all the things we wanted to.
Very good. Top two zoning rewrite project. Uh, submitted the grant. They did a preliminary eye level review and said, everything is there. The application is complete. Although they clearly did not read through the minutes that we submitted. We were, we were supposed to have included minutes in which we passed a resolution. Authorizing the board to apply for the HOP two grant. I think it's a technicality, but I think we should, uh. Ask such a resolution tonight. And then we can submit another set of minutes, which they may or may not read. And hopefully have our. Backends covered.
Didn't the select board?
Again.
They did.
Select board did.
Planning board did.
But we as planning board, we discussed, we discussed it up one side and down the other. But we never got to the point of making a horrible resolution.
Yep.
So, um. Would somebody care to make a motion? To that effect?
I'd make a motion that the planning board.
IHOP?
Put it in the, put it in an application for the IHOP.
Submit an application.
Not, yeah, not IHOP.
I'm sorry. New Hampshire HOP two grant. The, the New Hampshire HOP two grant. For this town of Enfield.
Motion has been made. Does anybody want to second it?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
I'll bring the maple syrup.
Yeah. Abstentions, okay.
So. Saying that take too long.
Uh, that's, that's in the minutes. Uh, today I completed session four of the Housing Academy. Um, I don't know what happens after that, if they have a graduation ceremony. Rob, you've done this before.
They do, they'll, they'll, they'll reach out. I think you've done a few of them. They'll have like tours and things like that, so you can kind of.
Yeah, they have tours. Um, there's a website that they have started up. That has an awful lot of resources and it has some chat functions so that people who have. Taken the Housing Academy can talk to each other and share ideas. Uh, if we get the grant, there will be the possibility that other people from town can take it. Um, basically, you know, what they, what they're trying to do. Was, um, teach people how to talk to their communities. About housing, how to deal with objections, how to present different things. Uh, in the hopes that you can bring your community along and get more housing. Or get them to buy into more housing. So I, I thought it was, uh, worthwhile several hours. Um. There were two hour and a half, um, Zoom sessions. And those bookended two in-person sec- sessions down at the. Uh, New Hampshire Housing Office in Bedford. Which is an hour and a couple of minutes away. So it, it really was, uh, I thought it was worthwhile. Um. I was in a much smaller session than the one that Rob was in. I think there might have been about twenty people. Uh, got to meet some of the people that were, um, the names have been bandied around. And, you know, we get to put, um, faces with the names and personalities and all that kind of stuff. Um, they are very tuned in to Enfield and to what we're doing. They like, uh, like what we've done so far in terms of leading the way. Or being one of the leaders on the second ADU movement. Um. They thought that our approach to zoning rewrite. Um, was basically good, but they did caution today. When I brought it up and, and described it to the group, um. It, you know, make sure that we start to. Involve a lot of people and make sure that. The framework or the outline that the one or two of us develop. Um, does not become. A top-down type of thing. Which brings me to our next topic, which is volunteers. Um. We have, let me see if I can call this up. Jim, you probably know it by heart, but I'm not sure.
Frank, if you're looking for my copy and asking.
Well, I will find it. Still finding, here we go. Uh, HOP grant two point oh. Application. Now computer. Oh, don't be a server. Well, here it is. So. As far as the HOP grant is concerned. We have. The following. Topics, areas of focus, whatever you want to call them. Um. First is the overall organization and formatting of the regs, which it sounds like Tim and Eric are on top of. Yes?
Yeah.
Village and community business districts. We have a volunteer that wants to do an initial outline or framework. Or take a pass at what these districts should look like.
I'd like to be on that.
Is that, is that where special districts come in, like Enfield Center?
Uh, no.
Or is that different?
That's different. We'll get to special districts like Enfield Center. It's about midway down. So, Tim's on village and CV. Rural districts.
Well, anyone else? Committee one works better.
I'm a committee of one, too.
You don't have to argue with someone.
I can do rural.
Okay, Dan's gonna do rural Lake District. I wonder who's gonna do that.
Yeah. Because Eric volunteered me.
It's like, they say get things done.
Six weeks ago, four hours, three minutes ago. It's called Voluntold. Not to keep a track.
Should have shown up.
All right, uh, Conservation District. That's one that's not going to require a whole lot of work.
Yeah, I'll play with that one.
All right. Uh, let's see. Commercial industrial, another one that's not going to require a whole lot of work.
I'll do that one.
Okay, Phil's gonna do that. Um, what else we got? We've got, um, Eastman and Shaker Village Homeowners Association Districts. Two of those. Again, not going to require a lot of work. We could probably lump Enfield Center in with that.
Beg to differ. I think, I think Shaker Village is gonna, gonna take a considerable amount of work. Because Enfield Center, we're not even sure we. We're not even sure that we're gonna do an Enfield Center district. We've talked about it. Um, the one that won't take a lot of work is obviously the Eastman.
Yeah, I mean, Eastman is probably less than an hour of work, I think. Um. Yeah, I, I kind of think Enfield Center might need some work.
Well, I mean, we discussed that, thrown that idea out as a bullet. I think we should actually talk to some of the people that live there and find out what they would like to see happening in their neighborhood.
Well, that would be a part of what the people who are volunteering for these various topics. Uh, should be doing.
Yeah, the, the intent is to try to put something down on black and white, so that when you get people together, they can respond to something.
Yeah.
So right now it's out of the rural R three, on R three.
Where, Enfield Center?
Yeah, it's not a separate district right now.
No, it's not right now, but you know, we're, neither is the lake.
Maybe are. I'm not even sure, oh, it falls. No, maybe, no, it's.
Well, I'm interested in the Enfield Center.
Okay. Linda, why don't you head that up then?
Okay.
Uh.
Does Eastman and Shaker Village come with it?
If you'd like to take them on, um, I think.
Congratulations.
I'm not sure I'd like to take.
Linda, come on down.
I would like to be a part of the Shaker Village discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I've been pushing that one for a long time, so. My own fault. Paying the deeds on those things.
Okay, so the way we discussed it is that all of the above. Because they are. Zoning district issues. And we want to get them before the voters in twenty twenty-six. Yeah. Would get done first. And then once we are well along the way. Then we would jump into subdivision and site plan regs. And those are just things that need to be adopted by us as a board. They don't need to go before. The voters in March, so that could kind of fill out the rest of the time for the HOP grant. So at some point, we would need people to do site plan and subdivisions. Um, I would certainly like to jump in on the site plan. And would do subdivision as well. Unless anybody has a burning desire to do either or, work with me on them.
But we wouldn't even start that till we were well advanced on there.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
When do we hear about the HOP two?
Uh, I think they said sixty days. They should start turning out, uh, responses. So I'm thinking, and just, uh, sometime in December would be my guess.
So we should have some sort of a due date for an initial draft for all of these? Yes?
Uh, what I put in the grant, if I can find the right page. Uh, scope work. Like shade alerts. Here we go. Yes. So, I, I had to do an outline timetable, which. Hopefully makes sense.
That you did without talking to us.
I, I did, I did it.
That's right, we, we did, we didn't.
I did it, I did it in conjunction with our consultant, who has to fit.
Gotcha.
Back into his work schedule and other towns that he's doing, uh, work for. So, working up the draft outline framework, whatever we call it. Happens between January and May of next year. Done by planning board members, stakeholders. And assistance from resilience as needed on a non-call basis. Um. Schedule forums and print and mail a flyer notification. The end of May. Resilience prepares charts, handouts, and other materials, web surveys. For public forums by the end of May. Public forums happen from the end of May to the end of June. And revisions as necessary extending through July. Um, resilience drafts and edits the specific regulatory language. Um, July through November. Resilience prepare, uh, that's resilience with feedback from us as the planning board. And they prepare voter guides and regulatory support materials in November and December. With, um, again, feedback for us. That's basically materials that will be used. Uh, after warmed. Uh, after warned, warned public hearings. The public hearings will happen in December of twenty-five, and if we need more in January of twenty-six. That's planning board with resilience. And then in March, we go to the voters. And I can send this over to Rob for distribution in case people miss things as I was talking.
That would be great.
Actually, Rob has a copy of this, don't you? Would you send it around?
Oh.
Okay. So that's where we are on HOP two point oh, um. The total was something in the neighborhood of ninety-six or.
Yep.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh. Just saw.
Just one question.
Ninety-seven, six fifty.
One question is for the entire board. Do we want a copy of that? The hot, the, the HOP grant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rob?
That's what she just has been sent, right?
No, I would, I would.
You asked for the schedule.
I would ask specifically.
The whole grant.
I'll send you the whole.
Send, send them the whole package.
The whole package.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's what I was planning to do.
Just so we could see. The other stuff other than just the schedule, cause there's a bunch of stuff in there. Somebody read it. There's a bunch of stuff in there that you, you really wanna read.
Yeah. I wasn't here, obviously, um, but when, when I was in this, before I left on my trip, it was just the board was having a discussion on. Do we go with resilience or do we have an open bidding? Is, and I, did you?
We, we kind of kicked that around, um, and there were pros and cons to both. Um, the final decision was that resilience has a track record with us. Um, they would jump in being up to speed rather than some other firm. Um, you know, having to take time to get up to speed and we had a, we have a. Working relationship established at this point. And also there was a time crunch in terms of.
Always.
Being able to interview other prospective bidders. Uh, the way the grant application is written, if somebody is on the approved list of vendors. It does not have to be a competitive bid as far as they're concerned.
And, um, the only question is.
Did we vote on that?
We did.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, I, I don't think so. Same, I would go ask for video.
Cause I left with a different.
I recall that you said it's always a good idea if you're in town to get three bids.
Yeah, and I, I still think we should put it out there. That's my opinion. I was disappointed with their performance. I think we should look for what's out there. I, but, I'll stay there. Okay. I, I think at this point, it's water over the dam.
Well, we don't have, we don't have a contract, but. Of course, there's no guarantee we get the grants.
I would say it's a very good chance that we're gonna get it.
So, what, I think what. I, I, I tend to feel the same as Eric about this, that, that I'd, I'd like to know who else is available.
There was not a vote that I have recorded in the minutes.
Okay. I think maybe I just took it as a. What I thought was a consensus based on.
I think there's real pros and cons. I, I certainly respect the idea of going out to bid. I also think that's another level of effort on top of an awful lot of work that we just laid out for everybody. Um, and. I was relatively pleased with. The experience and intellect of the two gentlemen. Um, I thought there were some detractors, certainly the public forum, uh, mistakes were made. Um. Not sure if I have the stomach to go back out and look and.
Well, I can appreciate that viewpoint too, and I, I do think. If we're more explicit in the layout, what our expectations are with resilience, they do have, I agree, the expertise. To bring to the table.
I, I think part of the discussion that we had regarding this, um, Rob. Offered the opinion that on the HOP one grant. We did not do a proper job of managing and setting expectations for the contractor.
We, we, we did a poor job, but also we were jammed and we were in a situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got jammed. And I think that if we, if this group decides to go with resilience, that we've gotta. We've gotta really give them detailed expectations.
Mm-hmm. I wasn't working with this at that time, but I went to the meetings. And from outside looking in, was not overly impressed with them.
Yes.
And there was a lot of people walking out saying the same thing.
And so whose fault? Is that ours or is that their?
I think that one, yeah.
I think, I think part of it is ours.
I, I think part of it is ours, part of it is.
We, we didn't, we didn't review that material before it was put out in front of the public.
It was, it was this, uh, incredible time crunch on that.
So, um.
But also we, we.